I will call it being in order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. Good to see everyone. Could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilperson Bethany.
Here.
Brons.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Morrissey.
Here.
Soha.
Present.
Stuccio.
Here.
Wolfram.
Here.
Mayor Protencum.
Here.
State Patrol.
Thank you. We will move on to the approval agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? If everyone's all set, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve the agenda from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Flynn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. We will move on to public comments on agenda items. You have three minutes. Please keep your comments tied directly to something that is in tonight's agenda. And state your name and your board or your address. The podium is open.
Thank you. David Hamilton, Ward 4. Special Assessment Districts as used in Hillsdale can be legal, but are most always wrong, except when they're illegal, when they're definitely wrong. There's a limiting principle. There's lots of case law in Michigan about special assessment districts. And I'm not going to read every word on the page. I've asked Katie to distribute, like a good PowerPoint presentation. I want to hit a highlight or two. Key provision: No special benefit for mere remediation and maintenance. Berry Street and South Street have sidewalks and gutters and curbs. And they used to have paved surfaces. Those surfaces have deteriorated due to neglect.
Mr. Hamilton, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm wondering if there is a tie-in to this on the agenda for tonight?
Are we special assessing my property on South Street?
Is it on tonight's agenda?
It is in the minutes.
It is in the minutes? From October 20th?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I remember talking about it. Thank you for the pushback. No worries.
Yeah. I mean, it's in the budget, I assume? I mean, so I guess in that sense, I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. We desperately need civil discourse. I very much appreciate the need to push back a little bit. It's a Montesquian gift.
Sorry, just want to maintain regular order.
It's all good. Civil order is what we're trying to achieve here. Please, let's have discussions. Special assessment funds can only be used for improvements that demonstrably increase the market value of the affected properties, like widening roads, adding bike lanes, or upgrading utilities in ways that boost accessibility and appeal not to repair degraded, neglected infrastructure. They're supporting case law for the city's lawyer to look at. I really don't want to get to challenging the city in a court of law where my tax dollars work against me as a complainant. I really would appreciate if we take a sane look at what's being done under SADS and what is required of municipality under SADS. There is a case for them in adding value, not restoring value from neglect. Neglect is ubiquitous in Hillsdale. It affects most of us. We're paying our mechanics, if not a special assessment district, to have the suspension and steering components repaired on our cars. Berry Street residents petition to not have a SAD applied to their street maintenance, and they're not getting their street maintenance. That's a wrong. The SAD was misapplied. The residents opposed the SAD, and now they are not getting the safety and reliability repairs needed to their street. South Street's in the same boat. It already has curbs and gutters, and it used to have a good surface. Restoring that is your job, fellas. It's your job, Dave. Please. It does not merit a special assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Apologies again for interrupting.
My name is Eric Quickenall. I live at 74 South Broad Street, Ward 4. I'm here to speak about the same topic as my neighbor David Hamilton. I wanted to take it maybe on a slightly different tack, though. Nuts to reference the city code where it says, "If, at, or prior to final confirmation of any special assessment, more than 50% of the number of owners of privately unreal property to be assessed for any improvement shall object in writing to the proposed improvement. The improvement shall not be made by proceedings authorized by this chapter without the affirmative vote of seven of the members of the council." So I've been talking to my neighbors, been putting together a petition. I think the section of South Street that's going to be assessed as part of the special assessment district includes about 45 homes. So far, I have 15 signatures. I think I only need a few more to get to that 55%. I think I can easily get them in the course of talking to my neighbors. It's very clear that... Oh, and I'm sorry. I should explain what this petition actually says. The petition is not a straight objection to the whole assessment district. And the reason why it's not is because I think many of my neighbors are like me. They're afraid that if we object to all of the special assessment, that we won't get a new road. And we desperately need a new road. So what this petition represents is an effort on the part of me and my neighbors to ask for some kind of a compromise. Is there some way that short of $5,000 we can reach some kind of a reasonable agreement whereby we say, you know, maybe we have to do something to help make sure this project gets pushed along, and maybe we, as the people who live next to the street, get the most benefit out of it? But I think it's very clear that South Street is not a dead-end street. It's not simply a neighborhood street. It's a through street. It gets used for a lot of traffic, a lot of school buses. There are a lot of folks using it besides us. And we think that the way that the special assessment district... The way the special assessment is done, if it's done at all, should reflect that reality. So we would ask that the city council consider capping the SAD for South Street at $2,800 per resident or something lower than that as to best fits some kind of reasonable compromise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jonathan Meckel, and Ward 3. I live on the opposite end of South Street as Eric. Just wanted to kind of bring, discuss the special assessment district from a little bit of a different angle. At least one of my frustrations. So I actually work in state politics up in Lansing. We recently passed a new roads plan, which in fiscal year 2026 appropriates about $1.1 billion statewide, of which roughly $400,000 goes to the city of Hillsdale directly, specifically for road funding. It's called the Napco Road Fund is the name of it. And in future years, it's speculated that that number could climb to between $1.5 and $1.8 billion, kind of depending on what the revenue looks like. Part of it's a new excise tax on marijuana. So there's some unpredictability in terms of how that works. But that nets the city of Hillsdale, at the very least, in fiscal year 2026, an extra $400,000 to work on road improvements. Now, I don't have all the numbers right in front of me. I'm sure Mr. Meckle has a lot more of these details that he could poke into with more thoroughness than I can right here. But I'm smart enough to know that $400,000 divided by $5,000 gives you something like 80 parcels. So I don't know if the city was planning on charging 80 different people a special assessment in fiscal year 26. But if the number's any less than that, then the new money covers the difference. I totally understand the special assessment district when there's such a pressing need that there's no other way that we're going to be able to fix the roads in Hillsdale because there's no money to do it. That part I understand. What I don't understand is the state government's coming in and giving you, essentially cutting you a check for it seems to be perhaps close to the amount or even more than the amount that you actually need to get from residents. The issue that I have with this is these are our tax dollars that should have been going to roads the entire time. Now that the state is actually doing its job and sending that money to roads, which is where it's most desperately needed in the state, I think we rank something like 40th nationwide in terms of the quality of our road infrastructure. Now that we're actually giving that money, it's unfair to charge us for what we are already paying for through our income taxes, through our property taxes, for the amount that doesn't necessarily go to the city of Hillsdale and all the other ways that revenue is collected from the residents of the state and the city. So I'd really encourage you all to think a little bit about how you'll appropriate this new money and how you'll use it for road improvement projects, particularly because special assessment districts are inherently unfair. Our tax dollars already ought to be going to repairing our roads in Hillsdale. Some of them do. But to slap me with an extra $5,000 bill that I have to figure out how to... Like, I don't know how I'm going to do that. And I'd really encourage you all to think about how to use this new funding to relieve some of this tax burden on your residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Hartley, Ward 1. Here we are again, facing another special assessment district. And by special, I mean specially designed to reach deeper into our wallets while the city conveniently forgets its own responsibilities. The proposed Oak Street SAD is nothing more than masterful sleight of hand transforming decades of municipal neglect into our financial obligation. Let's be clear about what happened here. The city's job is to maintain our roads using the property taxes we've been faithfully paying, not to mention the $1.6 millionish the city receives from Lansing. Instead, they chose willful neglect, watching the streets deteriorate from functional roadways into lunar landscapes. This isn't improvement, folks. This is expensive damage control masquerading as progress. I don't know what happened here, but...
Could work out.
Okay, yep, it did, sorry. This is expensive damage control masquerading as progress. Under MCL, improvements are supposed to enhance property values and provide new benefits. What we're really looking at is restoration work necessitated by the city's failure to perform basic maintenance that should have been funded through our general tax revenues all along. The city wants us to believe that this qualifies as a legitimate improvement under MCL statutes, but let's examine these facts. True improvements add value beyond original conditions, like paving a gravel road or adding new infrastructure. I believe this is another attempt to rebuild what already existed and should have been properly maintained. Michigan law requires the SAD to only apply to properties receiving special benefits with cost proportionate to increased market value. But here's the kicker. We're not getting a special benefit. We're getting back to baseline functionality that proper maintenance would have preserved. The only thing special about this assessment is how it specially transfers the city's maintenance failures onto our property tax bill. Citizens in Jackson, Lyon Township, and Chesterfield Township face similar situations. If we allow these SADs to proceed, we are rewarding incompetence and establishing dangerous precedent. Every future maintenance failure becomes our problem to solve through special assessments while the city's general fund remains conveniently untouched. This SAD represents a fundamental breach of the social contract between citizens and government. We pay property taxes for essential services, including road maintenance. The city's systematic neglect doesn't magically transform necessary repairs into improvements worthy of special assessments. We must reject the SADs, not just for our wallets, but for the principle that municipal responsibilities cannot be retroactively transferred to residents when convenient. The city created this problem through neglect. Let them solve it through proper budgeting, not through creative financing schemes that make their failures our financial burden. I encourage councilmembers and staff to reject the $5,000 SAD because the only thing true to be special about this is how it specializes in making us pay twice the same for the same service. In less than a couple hours, I have 19 signatures of Oak Street residents, and I'll be able to get this completed. 50% plus one.
Thank you.
Hello, I just have one comment I want to make tonight. From the minutes, no special assessment district was put forth, it's counsel. The only thing counsel approved was to do drawings and an estimate to bring to counsel in the first meeting in January. So I just wanted to throw that out there. There is no at this time.
I mean, we talked about Oak Street and South Street.
We talked about it, yes, that's correct. But we've not anything for activating the district.
Thank you. The podium is still open.
James Edward Thomas, 2200 Bar Street. It's actually from page 13 of the minutes under Comment, under Melissa Hebert. Melissa Hebert said that counsel's authorization of tearing down the tent. And I'm going to truncate the rest of it. And then she goes on to, in detail in the recording, say that five of you who voted yes could have easily done nothing. But I want to point out that the duty of government to fulfill its responsibilities is actually codified in Michigan State Code under the Act of Nonfeasance, and it's MCL Code 750478. So it is actually your duty to uphold the code legally through the state. I'm not. I don't sit over there. But I would believe, in my reading of the very truncated version of the code I read today, that would be the case. Things that are also your duty is the protection of property through the Fifth Amendment and to make sure that you're not taking that property unnecessarily, AKA by not fulfilling your duty. You have absolutely no duty to people's personal safety. There are two Supreme Court... I'm sorry. This is a Supreme Court case which pushes the Fifth Amendment duties down to the local municipalities. It's Chicago, Comma, Birmingham, Quincy Railroad Company v. Chicago, 1897. And then there are two Supreme Court cases which tell you you have absolutely no duty to people's personal safety, AKA their recovery or their safe housing. And that's DeShaney v. Winnebago County of 1989. And that is also Castle Rock v. Gonzalez of 2005. Those are more germane to law enforcement, but they do extend to the duties of government. Also, if you look at Lindsay v. Norman, 1971, you have absolutely no legal duty to supply housing or special preference for housing or anything like that through what I could find. In the minutes on page 18, Shelley, or sorry, Missy, had heated commentary, according to the minutes. Part of her heated commentary was she was disputing that threats were made to the public employees. There is a YouTube video that clearly demonstrates that MCL Code 750-83483A was being violated at that time by the person recording the video. I do believe that Mr. Fry has a copy of that video. Shelley made a, on page 18, on her comments, she made a comparison between what happened with Camp Hope and what happened with the Kiefer and extensions. And one gets one and one doesn't. In my research, I could find absolutely no duty for the government to legally support commerce as opposed to maintaining public safety. And also, City v. Grand Pass v. Johnson, 2024, makes camping bans on public land upheld by the Supreme Court. Thank you. Thank you.
The podium is open. Is there any further public comment? I will close the podium. And we will move on to the consent agenda. Does counsel or staff have any changes to tonight's consent agenda? All set? I will entertain a motion to approve.
So move. Sure.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey to approve the consent agenda, submitted, seconded by Councilman Flynn. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote?
Yes, Councilperson Brons.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Morrissey.
Yes.
Soha.
Yes.
Stuccio.
Yes.
Wolfram.
Yes.
Mayor Protencum.
Yes.
Councilperson Bethany.
Yes.
State Patrol.
Thank you. We will move on to Roman numeral 6. Communications petitions, letter A. Purposed with autism's holiday event is on Saturday, November 22, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Hillsdale Free Methodist Church on Union Street. There's going to be gifts, vendors, crafters, stocking stuffers, large silent auction, food trucks, and more. That's Saturday, November 22, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Hillsdale Free Methodist Church. Anything from council or staff? We will move on to letter B. MFEI Sunlight Award. This is for our clerk here. Do you want me to read it? I'll read the first sentence. "It is my pleasure to inform you that you are among a select group of township and municipal clerk offices to receive the Michigan Fair Election Institute Sunlight Award as a responsive advocate." Congratulations. Thank you for your work. Good luck tomorrow. Would anyone like to add anything to this or comment on it?
I just think that the next quick little paragraph deserves to be read as well. As the enclosed certificate states, "This award recognizes Katie as a responsive advocate for her outstanding dedication and exemplary service in helping to remove redundancies from the local voter registration rolls." So again, thank you, Katie.
Yes, that's great. Clean and accurate voter rolls. We all want that. Good to know we have. Thank you. Okay, letter C. Commissioner Engels is here. It says email update. Would you like to talk to us?
Sure. Thank you.
Good to see you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. City manager. Tonight, I have a little different update for you. It's for our county parks. I'd like to introduce Mike Wurz, who was our county parks director. He has a few words to talk about. Survey that's upcoming with the five-year update on our recreation plan, also on our DNR grant. So kind of process that as you go. If you have any questions, we're both here to be happy to answer your questions. Mike, thank you.
Well, thank you for your time. We're in the middle of updating our five-year plan for the Rec Department. Part of that plan is having a survey that goes out to the public. This enables us to pick up new grants as we do this. And the public comments are very, very important. So what we've done, we put a survey out there. It's a 10-minute survey. We have it on the county website. We have it on a Facebook page, running it on WCSR, Hillsdale Daily News. And we will have it out for public view here at the end of November, about 19th of November. What we want to do is glean information from the local community for upgrades, improvements, things that may be needed, things that they see are lacking. Our last plan was instrumental in getting us a $256,000 grant from the DNR. With the $89,000 match for the county, we're looking at $355,000 to upgrade the dots and ADA compliant trails and a few other things out at the park. Our crown jewel at Lewis Henry Park. There again, 10 minutes is all we're asking of these folks to do this survey. The faster we get it back in, the more we'll be able to take care of business when we get it back. We want to take the information and actually implement some of the stuff that the old five-year plan has given us. I'm on my third year with the county, and I've actually taken a good hard look at this. And we've implemented some things based on that public input. So we're looking forward to our... We're in our 60-day... We're in our project agreement timeframe right now for our grant, so we're in our 60-day series. We will be looking to pass a resolution to accept those funds here at the next meeting. If everything goes well, we should be moving forward by the first of the year. And we'll have this done within two years. So our park, Lewis Henry Park, is in serious need of upgrades and improvements. And this is going to move us tonight right direction. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Yes, sir.
Just want to mention the park. Is there any concern I've talked to Doug about this? The water level of that pond?
That is another... Low. They are extremely low. We've been in a drought situation this year. They're extremely low now. The last dredge was performed in 1980. So yes, that is something... Call it, excuse me, yes. Commissioner Leniger and myself, we went for a grant for dredging the ponds. We didn't actually get it, but I will be going for another grant for dredging.
What about the dam on Barber Street? Can we control that dam somewhat?
The dam on Barber Street?
Yeah, because it goes... The river ponds go into Wyandotte Lake. Then it goes down whatever...
Right across. But it's my understanding that is a private dam. And that is something that I'm trying to put my hands on and wrap my hands around. But I've been told that's a private dam.
Maybe privately, especially in Barbara.
And, excuse me. We get water from the airport. It runs downhill into the pond, and then it fills up our ponds. So as far as copper dams go, they're all on the list with the state. So the dams and the bridges and such, they're all in a work program. So that's the county road commission side of it. So I wish I could answer your question a little better.
So just to follow up a little bit on that, the drought is the real reason that the water levels so low, even Lake Michigan, it's teed down. And so as we get over that drought, that's going to help. However, the dam that you're talking about, you know, we've discussed it, and we've talked with Matt Ward a little bit about this discussed it and we've talked with Matt Ward a little bit about this and how to move forward and what to do. And, and that's a big challenge that's, that's still there, absolutely. But the, as Mike said, the flow comes from the airport side. And if there's no water coming through, then there's, the water levels are just so low. So.
Okay.
Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Wurts. How can the public find your survey?
Go to the county website. Go under the Hillsdale County Government and then hit the parks. There's a one for parks. There's also the economic development homepage. So those three sites should be able to help you out really good. There's a link there.
Thank you very much. And it's in, it's back yet? Okay, great. Yes. So if you're hearing this, please go fill out that survey. Any other questions or comments from council? So this, this current grant is not adequate for the dredging. That's a much larger project.
Not. The current grant is just going to address the ADA accessibility for the dots. We'll be putting in eleven brand-new aluminum dots so that ADA folks can actually use them. And then we're going to have one mile of trail that will be ADA compliant.
And how would you rate the priority of dredging the ponds?
I would say, my rating itself, I'm a big advocate of getting it done. It needs to be done now. It's been neglected for thirty years. And water levels, you're right, even when the water levels are up and we're not in a drought situation, ponds are about eight foot deep, we're looking at four foot of muck in these ponds. Now, we are also treating them like, I did get a grant for an erasure unit. So we're gonna, we're gonna address pond number four first, which is the Warrior Pond. It's right up by the community center. I want to move that nutrients around, keep the nutrients moving around so that the nuisance plants don't have a chance to grow. So that's part of it. We're also using a product called bio muck pellet. It gets applied once a month and it does eat up that natural, the muck itself. It actually eats up about an inch and a half a year. There's other lakes up north that have done this. This, we're in our set first year of application. It's going to take, it's going to take some time.
Great. Thank you very much. Anything else from council? Thank you for your work on the parks. Anything else?
No, that's it for now.
All set. Thank you. It's been here. Okay, we will move down to room number nine, new business letter A audit presentation.
Hi, thanks for being here. Thank you, thank you. Good evening. My name is Mike Wilka with Yo and Yo CPA. So Karen's passing around my presentation now. I believe you should have it in your packet as well. The first thing I, I want to start with is, right now I'm presenting draft numbers. And so the reason for that is, as you're all aware, there's currently a federal shutdown and they have not yet approved what is called the 2025 compliance supplement. So as for the audit of federal awards, CPAs across the nation have been instructed not to issue any of those grant compliance audits yet. So they have released what is called their final draft some months ago. And, and so we've audited everything based upon that guidance under the assumption that there shouldn't be much changes after that. And if there is, we'll go back and touch some things up based on what procedures they suggest we do. So, so these are draft numbers now. And just for reference, this compliance supplement is normally released around May or June. So way behind schedule. But with that, I want to remind everybody that the audit that we conducted is for the fiscal year 2025, meaning July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. So some of the financial figures, we'll touch our, our very high level and we'll highlight them. But remember, all of the information that you've present, been presented lately as far as financials, much different than what you're going to see here. First, I'd like to go over what, what do we expect our audit opinion to be and, and what really is an audit? So firstly, an audit is the highest level of assurance you can receive on your financial statements, may only be issued by a licensed CPA firm. Management is responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements as well as maintaining internal controls and monitoring internal controls. Our responsibility is to conduct an audit on those financial statement numbers to make sure that they're materially correct. And that's a big, big thing to understand is, is we cannot go through every single transaction that happens in, in the course of the year. There's tens of thousands of them. So we do it on a risk-based approach and we sample transactions. With that, we've issued, or we intend to issue, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest level of assurance you can receive. And that's what you want to hear every single time you have an auditor talking to you is unmodified opinion. That means it's materially correct and it can be relied upon by outside parties. Next, I'll go through the highlights of the year-end numbers, big picture for the, for the general fund and some of the enterprise funds. On the slide here, you'll see a pie chart of the general fund revenues and other financing sources. Probably no surprise to any of you there, the bulk of that is the property taxes, followed up by some of the state grants, which are the state shared revenue. So the amount the state's kicking you guys every other month. This is highly consistent year over year. Other revenues are a little bit down, investment income, because if you recall in 2024, some money was moved into the capital project fund. On the following slide, it's a pie chart of your expenses. Again, that's for fiscal twenty twenty-five. Public safety being just about fifty percent of all of the expenses in the general fund, followed up pretty much neck and neck with general government and public works. Transfers during 2025 were significantly lower. And you'll see that in the trend chart next, on the next slide, because there was that $3 million transfer to the capital improvement fund in 2014. So let, let's look at that on the following slide. It's a ten-year trend of revenues and expenses, pretty well mimicking each other for, for most of the, the time period here, except in 2024, you see that major spike in expenditures. Again, that was a transfer. And then this year, revenues and expenditures just about mimic each other for, for not much of a change in your fund balance. Related to the fund balance, there is some policies about minimums that are required. And so we'll take a quick look at a few of the funds here. The general funds requirement is twenty-five percent and at the actual right now of operating expenditures, thirty-three percent. Local street is sitting right at sixteen percent, just above the policy requirement. Municipal street has well above the policy requirement. Again, that can really be knocked out with just one street project. And then the airport here, I want to, I want to talk about this one a little further. So it, it looks like it's under the policy requirement, but there was a major grant that happened during fiscal twenty-five, which inflated the operating expenses. So you've got revenues, you also got expenses. So normally, the operating expenditures are much lower than this $2.9 million. And next year, when you look at this again, it is likely to be well above the fifteen percent requirement. On the next slide, you'll see some of the major proprietary funds. That would be the electric, the sewer and the water. This is a snapshot of the statement of net position. I just want to highlight some of the major values here. In the current assets, the, that's primarily made up of your cash, your investments and your accounts receivable. So the amounts owed from your customers. In the non-current assets, that's mostly made up of your capital assets. For the electric fund, that also includes the investment in the joint venture for Michigan South Central Power Agency. In the liability sections, really, long-term liabilities represents long-term debt, so bonds. And then the net pension liability is also one of your major liabilities of 2.7 million in the electric and just about 400,000 for sewer and water. Total net position in, in electric fund is 27 million, sewer fund thirteen, and water fund just about nine. But it's important to remember, you know, those sound like big numbers. Most of that's tied up in infrastructure, right? It's not as though there's just free cash to spend. Lastly, some of the internal control areas we looked at and identified. There was excess budget, excuse me, excess expenditures compared to budget in the airport fund. So that was over budget. The budget was not amended timely in order to account for some of those invoices that come in near the year end. We identified no significant deficiencies. And with the single audit, that would be those federal funds, the compliance on the, the grants that you get from the federal government. We looked at the airport improvement program this year. That was our major program. And we have no compliance findings to report. Everything was in order there. Lastly, I'd like to look at what the pension funding status is as of the year end. Again, this, this can change pretty wildly if the markets start to tank, but they've been pretty good lately. So your fiduciary net position, that means your assets held in trust for your pensioners, is nearly $22 million at the end of the year, with a projected liability as calculated by your actuaries of $30 million. Now, that's seventy-three percent funded and right now the state is targeting for all locals to be at about sixty percent. So you're, you're in a good position in comparison to most of the state. With that, I want to thank everybody involved in the audit, Karen and Tina and everybody else. They, they were really fantastic, easy to work with. They do a really great job. And I want to thank you guys for choosing Yo and Yo to do your audit. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Councilman Nuttman.
Excuse me. Thank you for your presentation. And this too. The general fund expenditures, pie charts, maybe general four or five or something. Where exactly would roads fall?
So, so this isn't the road funds here. This, this is the general fund. So there may be some roadworks in the public works section if, if the general fund spends some money. No, no, it would be in the road funds then. So nothing in here.
Nothing out of the general fund.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Councilman Morrissey?
Do I understand that we have a triple-A bond rating now?
That I don't know the answer to.
If there's some, there's some indication in here on page, what is it? Yeah, page three dash twenty-four, talking about a triple-A bond rating, standard fours. I don't know if that means.
That, that is probably some of the investments that you're invested in. So those investments have that rating.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I see. You're probably looking at a line called municipal bonds. Mostly, yes. So those would not be the city's bonds. Those would be your investments.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Flynn?
Thank you again for the presentation as well. Just curious, when the government reopens and everything gets finalized, will you be back to give us a final presentation?
So I, I would not intend to do that unless there's any kind of changes. And I don't expect any changes. I'm pretty sure these, the, the numbers are, are going to be final. The only thing that may change is with the federal funding and that airport program that I referred to, if, if they suggest we test other certain compliance areas. So the way that the federal compliance audits works is they're very specific and the federal government tells us exactly what they want us to look at. So we did it based on their final draft, if you will. So if they make any changes, we'll go back, we'll request some additional documentation and look at it then. And if there's, if there's anything of any significance, of course, I would come back.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Thanks for your work.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
We'll move on to new business letter B, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget amendment.
Good evening. So these are our first quarter budget amendments for this new fiscal year. We have in the Tifa fund, Fund Two Forty-seven, we had some repairs and maintenance for moisture mitigation at the dawn theater. And that was about $12,000. So we're adding a little bit more to that budget, just in case there's any other repairs in this year. Also, the property taxes for the dawn theater were not budgeted. And so we're, we're adding those in, and as well as insurance. So they need a little more in insurance. In the library fund, we were asked by the library to add in a budget for a junior librarian. So this is a budget for the remaining of the fiscal year, because they're not starting at, obviously, the beginning of the fiscal year. So that's for the remaining forty hours a week, or forty weeks of the year. In Field of Dreams, we have, we had a pressure tank that we had to add. So we have to increase the budget there and a little bit for supplies and insurance. And then in Stocks Park, we just have a little bit of fees that we're incurring for bank fees and as well as we got some donations. So we're increasing the revenue there as well. On the library fund, this federal grant in the capital outlay, not library, did I say library? I'm sorry. I meant airport improvement fund. We have the terminal parking lot. So that's what's going on right now. So we have, we have a budget for that. And then in the BPU funds, so electric, sewer and water, we have to carry forward any capital projects that did not finish last fiscal year. So we have a roll forward of several capital projects, because our fiscal year kind of goes right through the middle of the construction season. So you'll see the expenditure side of those. And then if there's revenue, so for example, for Hillsdale College, the college year, you'll see some revenue in there for those utilities. And Hillsdale College is reimbursing us for those. So those are all just related to various capital projects previously approved by council in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. But we're rolling them, the budget forward for what didn't get completed for electric, water and sewer. Any questions or concerns that I can answer?
Is the federal reimbursement for the parking lot, is that the full amount? We've received everything now?
I don't know if it's the full amount. It's what I have.
Because we paid an advance, public capital outlay or the airport improvement fund before we have received it?
We do.
And we've received that money now?
I'd have to check.
I, I think we paid the bill date. We haven't gotten the money yet. So we had to pay the bill and then submit for reimbursement. And I don't know if, if they're processing those right now, because if the state can't get their money from the federal government, then we, we're in a holding pattern.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council? Councilman Flynn?
Just a quick question, Karen. When we make these adjustments, for, and I'm just using, for example, the, the, the light, part-time librarian, now the $16,000.
Yes.
Is that $16,000 already part of the library's budget? Or just renaming it? Or is this coming from someplace else in the overall budget?
No, that's a good question. So in the way that this is arranged in the detail, so there's, there should be an attachment that shows what the fund balance is in each of these funds that's requesting money. And we do, we show you the fund balance to show that they can contain it either within their revenues, they already have budgeted, or they have fund balance to contain it. In the library's case, they budgeted a surplus of $36,000 for fiscal twenty-six. They're asking to use an additional $17,000 of that money for this part-time librarian. They'd still be at a surplus of $19,162. So it's all the library's money.
Okay. So is that coming from general fund or from streets or whatever?
It is not. Yep, it is not.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a new request of the, that we did budget for this person. The library board passed that and then asked us to do the amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the budget resolution?
So move.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Soha, to approve the budget resolution. Can I have a call vote, please?
Yes, Councilperson Flynn.
Yes.
Morrissey.
Yes.
Soha.
Yes.
Stuccio.
Yes.
Woolfram.
Yes.
Your first, oh, you know.
Yes.
Councilperson Lemon.
Yes.
And Bromes.
Yes.
A zero approved resolution through six by five.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to new business letter C, Enterprise Fleet Management Services. Jason Blake, Flynn present, and Sam. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Fordham. So real quick, we're just going to provide a little bit of background and context about this request. And then I do want to mention, we do have Christopher here from Enterprise. If there are any specific questions about how the program works. But just to, to take everyone back a little bit. So currently, our Department of Public Services has a fleet of sixteen vehicles. They're light-duty trucks essentially. And eleven of those sixteen, so about sixty-eight percent of the fleet are ten years or older and/or have more than 100,000 miles on them. So these are vehicles that are in need of replacement. Two of the trucks, one is thirty-one years old, the other's thirty-three. We have one parked downstairs. I know some, some folks were able to take a look at that earlier. The average age of the DPS fleet has been going up year over year. And that's not really a surprise, like a lot of areas in the city. It's because we have limited funds in order to replace those vehicles. So we're, we're trying to play catch-up when we're getting further and further behind over time. So with those challenges in mind, we went out and we went to finance committee and asked kind of for their endorsement to look at some creative ways we might be able to look at phasing out or replacing some of the older vehicles and doing so in a manner that would kind of preserve our fund balances, make cash flow and, and budgeting more predictable, and lower our total overall cost of ownership over the lifetime of these vehicles. You know, under the current model, we go out and we purchase vehicles. It's not an every-year thing. In fact, the last DPS vehicle purchased was in 2023. In the current fiscal year budget, DPS has budgeted to use up to 250,000 to replace three new trucks. But in taking a look at, you know, what some other municipalities are doing and what some other options are, there, there is a way, and there's an alternative model that we can look at, which, you know, kind of coming from the perspective of good fiscal stewardship would really help the city out in a lot of areas. One of the things that, you know, Jason can attest to is, coming up over the next several years, DPS has a couple of major equipment purchase, purchases. So there's a new Vector truck, which that's half a million dollars. And then there's a new loader.
$200,000 expenditure.
Yeah, so these, these, these are coming up. And, you know, currently, there's money in the revolving mobile equipment fund, about $250,000 at the moment. And that's where DPS, you know, pulls those funds in order to replace vehicles and equipment. But with that in mind, we're going to have some big purchases coming up. We took a look at Enterprise, which offers a fleet management service model. And so this is a model where, wherein the city would lease rather than purchase outright certain types of vehicles. So again, we're talking about light-duty work trucks. In taking a look at, you know, the experience that other municipalities and counties have had with this, be it Sturgis does this, Hillsdale County, Oceania County, as well as several additional local government units in Michigan, a lot of them have found that there are some cost savings we had in, in going with this model, as well as the fact that it does basically reset the age of the fleet. It helps you phase out those older vehicles and get to a point where we can kind of stabilize. So just real briefly here, what we're talking about again is a model wherein we would work with Enterprise Fleet Management. We've, you know, identified the six oldest vehicles that DPS currently has in the fleet. And we would look to replace those six vehicles with ones that we are leasing from Enterprise. So the total cost between the down payment as well as lease payments in year one would be about $137,000 to replace the equivalent of $440,000 worth of trucks and vehicles. Again, from a cash flow perspective, that would keep, you know, some money in the revolving mobile equipment fund. It would help DPS, you know, every year have a, you know, an, an annual appropriation for this. It would be easier to track. Enterprise offers the ability to, you know, monitor the fleet via maintenance, you know, just helps over the life cycle. And then these are open-ended lease arrangements. So the idea there is that the city, in looking at this model for the six trucks, would basically be leasing things and then ideally holding them for a period of about five years. So they're still covered under warranty at that point in time. And then looking to resell those or, or cycle those out when you can still get, you know, near peak value when it comes to the resale market. And the equity, you know, so proceeds from the sales would, you know, go back to the city in order to help, you know, either replenish and continue with new vehicles in this program. Or at a certain point, if council decided they didn't want to go this route and wanted to go back to purchasing vehicles and doing it on, you know, one-off every year, every other year basis, they could do that based on the needs of the council. So that's a little bit about the program here. We do have, again, Chris from Enterprise. I think he's able to give, you know, a bit of an overview of the program and answer any specific questions. So. Any questions for us or should we have Chris? Any questions for us, or should we have Chris?
Thank you.
So does this cover maintenance on the vehicles as well?
So the first four or five years, it's under warranty. I mean, it's bumper-to-bumper warranty for this. So theoretically, besides the oil changes, everything would be covered with bumper-to-bumper.
Okay. I mean, I'm just curious about, I mean, a normal wear and tear, you know, if there was a bump against a truce truck or some damage that is what, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we'd have to cover that out of our pockets.
Okay, okay.
Councilman Flynn?
Just curious, when you say a lease program, normally at the end of the lease, you turn the vehicle back in, but the way Sam explains it, we would be able to sell the vehicles and pocket that money?
Yeah, that's an open-end lease, yes.
Okay, so if he could explain that?
We'll have Chris talk a little bit more about the specifics.
Okay, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, yes, and good evening. Yes, my name is Chris Teiner, represent Enterprise Fleet Management. Your question specifically about the lease, this is a commercial-grade lease, so it behaves a lot more like a finance where instead of paying this vehicle down to zero like a traditional finance, you pay it to a residual. Now, this residual is still quite a bit less than what it will sell for, but when we sell that vehicle, anything over and above that residual will go back to the city. And these are considerable funds, and funds that can be used again to reinvest in future vehicles, which, again, the county here has done and others to reduce their total cost of ownership.
So you would sell the vehicles at the end of the lease, not the city?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
And the city would receive all of the proceeds from the sale at that point?
Correct, yes, everything over and above the outstanding balance on the vehicle, which is what technically makes it a lease rather than a finance. So a lease in this case has a smaller residual, whereas a finance would have it paid down to zero. So like, for example, one of the trucks is paid down to $15,000. The actual resale value of that vehicle may be closer to $35,000 or $40,000. So the difference between the 15 and the 40 is money that would go back to the city and be reinvested or have the ability to be reinvested, or it could be paid back to the city for other purposes.
Councilman Sutcliffe, so is it sad for the city to take care of this equipment?
Yes, because the resale would be positively affected by it, yes.
Councilman Flynn?
And Jason, would the city be responsible then for outfitting these trucks? If they need extra equipment on it than just a regular pickup truck?
Great question. So working with Chris and Enterprise, if they go out and do all the outfitting for us as well?
Oh, really?
Correct.
So that's all part of the price?
Yes, sir.
Cool.
Yeah, so most of that, your down payment, is for the outfitting.
So he would get with you then and say, okay, what do you need on this truck? What do you need on that truck? And you would give him the specs and everything. Would he, I guess, put it out for bid then? Or would, do you have companies that you just go to that say, hey, I need this and that and another thing? Or do you have to bid it out like the city would?
Yeah, so we have an arrangement with Sourcewell, and so our bids can be directed by the city, or we will utilize our Sourcewell vendors for the equipment.
Okay, thank you.
So Sourcewell is like ideal, it's a purchase co-op through the state, or actually it's national on the Sourcewell, so that's within our purchase policy that we have here at the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have something like a 10-year annual average cost from the RMEF versus a projected 10-year average cost from this program? And I think one of the annual costs is $81,000 and another $50-some for the down payments?
Yeah, I don't think we have that. And I would say that the maintenance over 10 years on the vehicles we have is very skewed because unfortunately, the repairs of new are the reactionary. They're not preventative, you know, those, a lot of vehicles like the one out there, it needs brakes fixed on it, there's a hole in the floorboard, a sign's put in it. Have another truck, the taillights are always going to bring it up to your day. A lot of our maintenance is just to keep them on the road, you know, spend no more than that. So there are skewed numbers, if I can do it.
And then is the goal to have the average age of the vehicle five years or less eventually once this is fully implemented?
That would be the goal, yes. You know, as we budget every year for the 10-year RMEF program, we never even hit that close as we see our vehicles, most of them are 17, 18 years old. So that would be the ideal, and what Enterprise does for us as well, is they actually see where the sweet spot is and sell those vehicles. It might be within four years, might be in six. So that's something that they do as well for us.
Yes, Councilman Sutcliffe?
Do you have labor reduction in this because you're not going to have maintenance guys as much?
Oh, no, there's plenty to keep them going. So he actually works out, he actually works out the field with us as well.
Okay.
Yep, thank you, sir.
Anything else from council?
What's the timeframe for this? And how's the city going to dispose of our six vehicles, five, six?
I'm going to take the one, just the one.
Yeah, so the timeframe is once the agreements are authorized, most vehicle lead times are about three to five months. The city will be paying for it once the vehicles arrive, not prior. So about three to five months, so sometime in the spring, you might start seeing some vehicles show up.
What was the second part of this?
And this isn't just a personal question. What are we, what are you going to do with those trucks downstairs?
So those trucks, and we talked with Enterprise as well, some of them don't have a resale value on them to go. We do what we do on our vehicles, we put them on a go-deal and then they go and auction them off.
Locally, or you send them off to some?
No, no, we actually have, we put them on a go-deal ourselves. KD, Ken over at VPU, we sell them local from here, they just come here to pick them up. We've gotten a lot of good return on using the go-deal site on our vehicles. You know, again, whatever we get will go back in the area to help replenish for our expenditures.
And that will also be in the spring, I suppose?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Soha?
Could I propose on Commissioner Ingles to speak to the county's experience with Enterprise?
Sure, my best answer is our finance director, Derek Ringman, administers the program, and it's been ongoing for a period of time, I don't know how long, but he's very happy with it, and each year we do a certain number of vehicles, so. No issues that I'm aware of, that it's a very positive program.
Okay, anything else? I guess the only thing I would like to see is, once this is implemented, how do the average cost for the two models compare? I would assume, is there going to be a slightly higher cost because you have newer vehicles all the time?
As in, I'm sorry?
As opposed to the run-them-to-the-ground model? It seems like in the short run, there's going to be some savings, right? Because you won't have to buy a bunch of new vehicles. But is there a projection of whether in the long term, there's going to be a slightly higher cost in order to have more up-to-date vehicles with less maintenance?
Yeah, so the answer to that is no. So Enterprise, and you can see there's a fleet analysis that they did, but they have a 10-year savings, right? If we wanted to continue and do this program for 10 years. And so you're looking at about $472,000 in savings over the 10 years, the cost of, you know, total ownership, buying it outright versus the leasing model. So it does provide a significant, you know, return on investment and helps get that average annual cost for the vehicles down. So you are, you know, it is newer vehicles, but also you have to remember it's increased fuel efficiency, it's the fact that we are getting equity out of it. So the city, we don't benefit from depreciation like private enterprise. We can't write it off on our taxes. So the fewer depreciating assets that we can own as a city, the better it is in terms of, you know, generally speaking, the total, you know, cost of ownership over time. So that's what this would do, is it would give us increased flexibility and it would help, you know, remove some of those assets that are just going to depreciate. And again, like Jason said, you know, the 33-year-old truck over there, you know, at the end of the day, if it's worth $500, we're spending more than, you know, way more than it's worth just to maintain that and keep it on the road. That's just a net liability for the city. So this does offer significant cost savings when you run this, you know, let's say over 10 years.
Okay, sounds good, sounds too good to be true. We get newer vehicles all the time at a cheaper price. Okay, anything else from council? Councilman Flynn?
Is there a, Mr. Enterprise, I'm sorry, is there a mileage issue? Because, you know, with a general lease from an automobile dealership, you get so many miles per year, is there a mileage factor in this as well?
No, sir. So the mileage that we're using, or the mileage, I should say, the time that we're recommending to hold the vehicle is based on the historical mileage pattern of the vehicle. We set up the finance or the lease based on that historical mileage pattern. The reason that we set the residual so much lower than the expected resale value is it provides for basically open-ended amount of miles. And if we're seeing something change with the miles, we can then exit the vehicle earlier or hold it longer to keep with the lowest total cost of ownership. So there's not an over-mileage or wear and tear component to this lease like other leases might have.
Okay, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you all for your work on this. Thanks for answering the questions. Anything else from council? I will entertain a motion.
I vote that we accept it.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Sutcliffe, to enter into the Fleet Management Service Agreement for the replacement of the six oldest DPS vehicles. Any last comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Woolrum?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Galeno?
Yes.
Councilperson Metney?
Yes.
Brunz?
Yes.
And Flynn?
Yes.
Say it's approved.
Thank you. We will move on to row number 10, Miss Lady's Reports. First, we have a proclamation for Family Court Awareness Month. Whereas the family court system plays a critical role in resolving disputes and ensuring the safety and well-being of children and families, and whereas an estimated 58,000 children in the U.S. are ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents each year resulting in hundreds of child murders during visitation with an dangerous parent. In Michigan, 39 children have been killed by a parent since 2008 during divorce or custody disputes, and whereas in August 2025, six-year-old Rowan Mori of Caledonia, Michigan was not returned to his mother after his father's parenting time. A search led police to discover that Rowan had been shot and killed by his father, who then took his own life. Rowan's mother had previously reported the father's abusive behavior to both family court and CPS, and whereas in August 2022, 16-month-old Chaos Demillo McCarthy was murdered by his father in Genesee County. A Genesee County judge had awarded the father temporary custody just weeks before the boy's death, despite the father's prior felony conviction. And whereas the Family Court Awareness Month seeks to educate the public about the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety, fairness, and accountability, and whereas this month is dedicated to raising awareness about the challenges faced by families navigating the court system, while advocating for improvements to ensure that decisions are made in the best interest of children. And whereas we recognize the tireless efforts of advocates, legal professionals, and organizations working to support families and promote reforms that enhance the effectiveness and fairness of family courts. Now, therefore, I, Joshua Palladino, Mayor Protem, do hereby proclaim November as Family Court Awareness Month in the city of Hillsdale, and I encourage all citizens to learn more about the family court system and support efforts to improve its processes for the benefit of children and families. Any comments from council on this? Do we have a representative here?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for being here.
Should I come up?
Yeah, if you'd like to say a few words, please.
I would love to say many words.
Hi, what's your name?
My name is Michelle Costeau, and I'm a member of Protective Parents Michigan. I just want to thank the mayor and council for acknowledging that child safety should be a priority in family court and custody proceedings. One in three Michigan families are directly impacted by domestic violence, myself included. But abuse also affects every single person in this room in this state. Without proper training for family courts on domestic violence, children continue to be exposed to abuse, and families need more social support, putting extra strain on local services like shelters, counseling, and child protective services. Post-separation abuse in family court puts children in harm's way because abusive parents are more likely to seek sole custody and are successful 70% of the time. Tragically, abuse is often not understood or believed by the courts, and many children are ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents. I want to share some statistics with you to see why family court reform is needed, and I invite you to request the sources of my statistics. 60% of perpetrators who abused their spouse will abuse their children. Adverse childhood experiences, also known as ACEs, such as abuse negatively impact a child's development, their relationships, and their mental and physical health for their life. Most child abuse is perpetuated inside the family by a parent. Children are three times as likely to be killed in their home than in school shootings. And one child dies every day, every six days amid custody fights and family court cases. Since 2008, 39 Michigan children have lost their lives during divorce and custody battles. As mentioned earlier, one of these children is Rowan Mori Poles of Caledonia, who was not returned to his mother at the end of the father's parenting time and was later found to be a victim of murder-suicide. Rowan's mom has been unable to get an Amber Alert issued despite appealing to the police and the family courts. A new law has passed the Michigan House and is being considered by Senate is Rowan's Act. This act would allow state police to issue an Amber Alert more quickly when a child is considered to be in danger. We are also trying to establish Caden's Law in Michigan to prevent future tragedies. Caden's Law is focused on prioritizing child protection over parents' rights, which is not currently the case, despite public opinion on the matter. This law was named for Caden Mancuso, a seven-year-old girl who was murdered by her father during court-ordered unsupervised parenting time after the court blatantly ignored the father's history of abuse. Caden's Law would require training for judges about all types of abuse, and judges would need to consider past history of domestic violence when making custody decisions. Our children's lives are literally dependent on the courts becoming educated on these issues. I want to thank you again for proclaiming November as Family Court Awareness Month in the city of Hillsdale. And I want to, like, I want to encourage you to support Caden's Law. Please contact your state representative and the family and veterans committee members of the Michigan House of Representatives. To support Rowan's Law, or, sorry, Rowan's Act, please contact your state senator. If you or someone you know is struggling to protect your children in a family court, please contact us, Protective Parents Michigan, on Facebook or therowanproject.com. Again, my name is Michelle, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you mind, is that a question for Michelle? Thank you, Councilor, do you mind?
Is it part of what's going to go on, is that you're going to educate judges? Is that part of the program?
That is already well underway. We have lots of, for judges and people working in the system, there is a ton of education that is available to people who are interested in learning about that. And of course, we are continually working to improve that education and make it accessible to the people that need to receive it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Flynn?
I know that one of the issues that you face is lack of. If you talk to anybody who works at CPS or any of those other departments, they have not enough people. Are there processes in the works that are trying to get more CPS workers, more, you know, lawyers and things that can help?
You know, I can't really comment on that because I don't know the information. I will say my personal experience is that we need to train the existing force of workers on the reality that is happening and how to prevent it. Probably more people are needed, but I think what's happening is the workforce that's out there tasked with protecting people are miseducated or not understanding what abuse is and how it plays out in the family court system.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
No other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Thank you for your work on this. We will move on to Miss Lady's Reports B, appointments to the local advisory committee for dialeride, Teresa Welch, recommended by Jason. And I don't believe she's here unless... Oh, okay. So she had many, does it say on here maybe it was in the email? Oh, that's how long she's lived in the city. She's been in, oh, driver-trained dispatch. I believe it was for decades that it said in the email, so. Highly qualified for the position. Any comments or questions on this? Yes, Councilman Flynn?
Just quick, which, because I know you said that the last
Just quick, which, because I know you said at the last meeting, there were a couple of different categories, and we needed somebody for dialerides. Which category did she fulfill?
I believe we filled the user. So this must be the senior citizen category?
Correct, senior citizen with disabilities. This one, we're something we all covered that right now.
And she just happens to know this field?
Yes.
So it's a good match.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Teresa Welch for the dialeride committee?
Some move, support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey seconded by Councilman Flynn to appoint Teresa Welch to the dialeride advisory committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will move on to, that's it. We'll move on to general public comment. The podium is open for three minutes. Please state your name and address or ward, and you may speak on whatever you desire.
Okay, yeah, just a couple of things with the Neighborhood Program Fund that came through our office last Friday. We contacted Lansing as we didn't know a couple, some clarifications on what we're looking for and how some of that money is going to be appropriate to us. So, right now, there's a lot of things that is unknown, how it's going to be distributed, when it's going to be distributed. I was told to stay tuned. For the other funding, so our MTF funds, actually the one funds are there are going down at first, could be for a while, it could just be a couple months. Those findings will go down and they'll reflect it. And I believe in San Francisco, this was some of the other funding for like our general fund will go down as well.
Yeah, so just, and again, you know, this is in reference to, I know it's kind of been in the news when the state did pass the, the new Michigan budget recently, that there were some additional dollars that were allocated for transportation funding. So, you know, as city staff, we've been trying our best to get more accurate information to digest this, to figure out how it's going to impact the city. And as is typically the case with a lot of the things that Lansing does, it's pretty complicated. So we are still waiting on a lot of information, but like Jason said, in the initial budget analysis, it does show, you know, about $400,000 or so being allocated to what's called a Neighborhood Road Fund. That's money that the city would receive as payments from the state. As Jason also mentioned, you know, that comes with a corresponding decrease in some of the Michigan Transportation Fund monies that we receive from the state. And the recent state budget did include a 6.3% reduction in state revenue sharing. So once again, they are giving less money back to the cities. So, and we're still waiting to hear on, you know, when the Neighborhood Road Funds will become available. You know, the state treasury hasn't decided when they're going to allocate these. We know that this is supposed to happen during the state's fiscal year, which is, you know, begins at October 1st and ends September 31st. They run on a different fiscal year than the city. We don't have an indication. Some of this new money comes from a new marijuana sale excise tax. We don't know when the, the state is going to, you know, collect and produce the report and cut that check to cities. It could be, you know, one time at the end of their fiscal year. So there's a lot that we don't know right now about, you know, some of the, the new road money that's apparently out there. We have, you know, again, reached out to our state representative's office for some additional clarification. We talked to some folks at the Michigan Department of Transportation Jackson Service Center. Even they are unclear on a lot of this stuff. So, right now, we're just kind of in a holding pattern until we find out more about, you know, what this actually means for the city, you know, what's going to be the impact. Because again, it is an increase in some areas, it's also a reduction in some other areas. So, it's not, it's not exactly clear at the moment what the final, you know, dollar amount is going to be, or when the city can expect that. But as soon as we know more and we have more information on the program, we're going to keep council updated and share that because I know it's important to everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I talk again?
Yes.
Jonathan Eubell, Ward Three, wanted to, one of the, one of the things, so I'm not currently half my employer, but the $407,000 number is the difference between fiscal year 2025's total MTF distribution and fiscal year 2026's estimated MTF distribution. So there is a slight decrease in the Michigan Transportation Fund, but the increase, but the, the total net increase due to the Neighborhood Road Fund is $407,000 estimated by the House Fiscal Agency. That's for fiscal year 26. The reason why, my understanding is the reason why there haven't been details explicitly provided about when those payments will occur is because the two largest sources of the increase are a new wholesale tax on marijuana, which starts January 1st of 2026. So none of that revenue's been collected yet. And the second larger portion is an adjustment to the state, the way we do gas tax in Michigan. So you won't pay sales tax to the pump anymore, you will only pay a gas tax, which the amounts essentially match. So it won't make a difference in what you see at the pump, but all of that funding will then be allocated to roads, but that also doesn't start until January 1st of 2026. So there are two additional funding sources that only comprise about three-quarters of the fiscal year in 2026. Starting in 2027, those changes will be true for the entire year, so there should be about a 33% increase in that money. So that would go from roughly a $407,000 difference to, if we interpret that linearly, which may or may not be exactly true, but it's probably a good rough estimate, a fiscal year 27 is $530,000-ish. So, but that's the reason why that funding hasn't been entirely allocated and determined yet.
Thank you. Thank you for that information.
Mr. Bell, did you have a question for that?
Name is Larry Wall, Ward Three. Since we're talking about money tonight, taxpayers are being scammed. Available services are not being rendered, and in some cases, people are getting paid for doing nothing. Reference, code enforcement. Kim Thomas used to do in code enforcement herself, but ever since Tent City popped up, she hasn't done anything in Code Three aboard Three. In fact, I have an email from her saying that the only thing she's going to do is maybe send somebody out to take care of something. Another one is with the police department. You all got a copy of the state law requiring dogs four months and older to be vaccinated and licensed? ACTP, the police department, did nothing from the dog bite incident, which was referenced, that the dog was not raised, vaccinated, and or licensed, and subsequent animal arch calls where they were around. All the dogs present at that residence, no action at all. In fact, I even filed a complaint form with them pretending to have same action right after the dog bite incident. And so that should back up or give reference to something going on there. You all have a copy of the state law? Why is it not being a forest? Also, with Kim Thomas, why is she not doing code enforcement? She's in charge of the department? What precludes her from doing her job like she used to do? Mr. Beaker was code enforcement officer on the city's website. He disappeared. Kim Thomas was doing it. She even took some incidents at court, so she couldn't do the, couldn't do the work, but after the Tent City incident, she backed off. Right now, there is three major overlooks at the residence where the dogs are. She failed to do it, and she gave me a bunch of gluey about why they could do it. First, it was going to be an Airbnb. They violated that timeframe. Then you can have visitors in, that's okay, but then when they started receiving their mail there, that is being a resident in a single-family zone residence, and they are not part of the family. They were outsiders visiting, and they'd be just parked at there. One of them is still there, and he's the one that's keeping the house now. She's somewhere else. Mister is gone on the area. So somebody is wasting their taxpayers' money for doing nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
CJ Tomcrae, Ward Three.
Sorry.
I don't know how many of you had a chance to hang out in Jonesville in the last couple weeks, but, and I know it's early, and it's just, pretty much just gotten finished, but Facebook is just blowing up with complaints. People can't make a left-hand turn, things like that. And I bring it up because I really, really hope, because I've been on the fence with the road diet. I can understand it from a financial point of view. I can understand it from a business point of view, but I've heard complaints from people in Jonesville that the people are not going to the businesses because they can't even figure out how to manipulate that, the traffic during certain times is so bad. I just hope we're really looking at it because if we have the same train wreck here, if that, what they did in Jonesville is what they're going to do here, I really think we need to look closer because it's, I don't think it's going to be a benefit. And I hate to say that because I like some of the road diet and some of the changes that you guys were going to implement with the parking and down at the pie and things like that, but man, it's not good. So, just throwing it out there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jack McLean, 1445 South Button Room. Something about the parks and the homeless, they're just as scared of you guys as you guys are of them with your family there. They're taxpayers also. I mean, people might think they're not, but they've all paid taxes at some point. So, with that being said, you know, just because you wear a suit, you can't come in here and complain about them because who cares what they wear? I mean, I never wore a suit. I wore blue jeans. I used to wear a coat that was all shredded, just because that's what I wore. But that's got nothing to do with my character or anything else. I think the Safety Committee needs to have an emergency meeting after what was on the scanner pages about everything going on North Monroe Street again, and problems like they did at the beach. I mean, and when police went to the beach, they couldn't find anybody. But when they go here, they do find somebody, but nothing happens about it. I think one thing, one of the people on the council that was really against the tent thing, I, I kind of just in my head, I think he just wanted it closer to his house. So like the new church, the warming centers closer to his house, I think that's really what he wanted. I don't think he was against them being there. I think it was because they were too far away from his house, so he couldn't socialize with them. Voting. I think some of the people running for office really missed out by not going to the high schools. Boy, there's a lot of kids there that are eighteen years old that can vote. But I didn't hear one campaign thing going on at high school, which is really, all the high schools is really a loss of votes for anybody running. Mr. Mack, it's been nice knowing you. Good luck in the future, because you're going to need it. I really feel sorry for you, but I don't know. I think if it ends up with, with Hillsdale College getting as big as they say they want to be, they will all vote everyone in this city, because there will be that many people there. The cities, the citizens of the city need to get their head on their rear and figure out what's going on here because they're going to lose their city, and it's not going to be good. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? I will close the podium. We will move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a couple of things. I did place a written copy of this at the council table. We will add it to the, the packet as it didn't make it, make it in Thursday. But just a reminder that the Mero election is tomorrow, and the polls open at seven AM and close at eight PM. There will be no library services on the state due to the library being used as a polling place. So from seven AM to eight PM for voting tomorrow. Upcoming holiday office closure, November 11th is Veterans Day, and the city will be closed for business and will be open for normal business hours on the 12th, Wednesday. The Hillsdale Community Library has introduced a new program called the Library of Things. The library is now offering innovative new resources called the Library of Things. This collection allows patrons to check out a variety of non-traditional items such as power tools, diagnostic kits, do-it-yourself tools, and even YouTube book, audio books. Just as they would a book, patrons age eighteen and older may borrow one item at a time for up to seven days with a liability waiver. The new initiative expands the library's mission of providing practical and educational resources to the community. The city extends our thanks to library director Rebecca Domski, Dom, Dobsky, for her leadership in bringing the program to life, as well as the library board. Josh is on that board as well. We do have a few new businesses to mention. Five One Seven Thrift Shop, we have Cooper's, and Kentucky Fried Chicken have all opened recently. Five One Seven Thrift Shop offers a wide selection of unique secondhand finds as well as brand-new items at great prices, supporting sustainable shopping and giving back to the community. Cooper's on Carlton Road brings the new dining option to Hillsdale with American and Mexican-style fare, burgers, bowls, wings, and more. And then KFC on Carlton Road as well returns with its national brand of chicken. So with that, I'll leave it there. There's one more item on there. There's the MDOT Summit that we have that we hosted here. I want to thank Jason for that work on that as well. But with that, I'll take any questions, councilmen, if they have.
Anything else for the city manager? Very good. Thank you very much. We will move on to council comment. Does council have anything to add? Yes, Councilman Flynn?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to alert, I don't know if the gentleman's still here, Eric? I think they still hear you, and I see Jill has left. I just wanted to alert you that earlier this year, and you may want to talk with Ms. Tomcrae after the meeting, when we were discussing the Berry Street project, council was approached and was given petitions like you're having signed, and I do believe, counter, our representative council said that they couldn't do it that way because of the way the charter is written, that it had to be an actual letter signed by the property owner instead of just a petition. So they had to go back, and I think it was like three times before, and Mr. Bentley might pat me up on this. So, just letting you know now, if we're going to make your presentation to the city, that instead of just doing a petition saying, "We the undersigned", if you go back to one of our meetings back in spring, I do believe those letters were a part of the record, I think Katie put him in there, and find out what the letter stated, and have it done that way, that would save you a lot of time and a lot of frustration for us saying, "Thank you, but you have to go back and do it the right way." Am I not right, Mr. Bentley?
Yes and no. I'll defer to the attorney again to reiterate this. It's a good time to probably do it, but they went through it three times, and I don't think they, they needed to. But the, as Kim would say, if she's here, the districts are in draw. So, this is a little preliminary.
Well, I just wanted to say that, I just also wanted to say that with some frustration, so that they don't, you know, run into something that's already been decided six months ago. So I was just kind of giving them a heads up before they got the cart ahead of the horse.
No, that's good, because the last thing anybody wants to do is invest futilely in their effort. But talking to- But talking to some of them, I think what they're trying to do is get our attention so that we reform the program before January comes, so it doesn't have to be as acrimonious and then a total failure as it was in Berry Street. So I think, I think they're indicating that they'd like a compromise. So thank you.
Thank you.
No, but can, can you reiterate what it should look like again after the districts are gone and so forth?
All it has to be is if 50% of the number of owners of privately owned real estate, excuse me, real property to be assessed for any improvement shall object in writing to the proposed improvement. If it's in a petition and says at the top, "we the under sign hereby object to the proposed improvement to be funded by special assessment," and they sign it, and they're a property owner, that's an objection. Doesn't have to be any special format, there's nothing in the, in the charter that requires that.
Oh, okay. So I thought we had this discussion, Matt, and the Berry Street project, and the exact opposite was?
No, we, the attorney said no. The attorney said it doesn't have to be any special format. So you may have had that discussion, but my legal opinion is it doesn't have to be any special.
Okay, then, then Eric, you're, you're doing what you should have. I just wanted to clear that up so that there wasn't any confusion.
Thank you. No, it's good to refresh our memories on that. Anything else from council? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Just real quick before, just a quick reminder that we are meeting Monday evening at 8 o'clock?
That's correct.
Do I understand correctly? Again, another charter amendment that needs to be fixed?
Yes.
Since the federal government's changed our voting procedures?
Monday at 8:00 PM to adjourn. I don't think there will be, to recess, excuse me, I don't think there will be any business, so as long as five of us are here, if you can make the irregular schedule, that'd be probably acceptable as long as, as long as we have a floor.
With that said, then, I make the motion to adjourn?
Very good. Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Soha to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here. Have a good night.